It's doing great. Glad to be here.
And you're still good for the 25th?
Mm-hmm. You're welcome.
360. 360.
Insurance is so expensive, right? What do you think about this?
I don't know. I just think that it's hard to find.
It sounds so horrible.
The talk, all it takes is like... It was very long to remember. It was like, it's like a four hour... And normally, they would have had two, switching back and forth. They had to beg to get me to come. There just wasn't anybody.
So I can give you this.
It was fun.
Reporting in progress.
Time to go? 6:31. Oh, yeah, it is time to go. Oh, oh, he is on, yeah. Let's see, where is he? I forgot. Remember where he's at?
No, sorry, shy, shy. I need a car.
Oh, okay. Oh, that looks pretty nice. All right, everyone, thank you for being here. It's 6:31, and so we're one minute late getting started. So let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the City Council meeting of the City of Rexburg for June 5th of 2024. We have already had budget meetings going on for about the last hour and a half and have gone over all of the budgeting for this year. We've been working on that for the last month or so on the city budget, and we will set up public hearing for that tonight. But let's start out this meeting with a pledge and a prayer. And let's see, let's see, we have council member, let's see, Reeser, and he's not here. So Councilmember Eric Erickson, would you offer the opening prayer for us? And Councilmember Chambers, lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Does that work?
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful as we are met this evening in this City Council meeting for the opportunity that we have to participate in the bettering of our city. We are thankful for the, for those citizens who have come here this evening to participate and pray that we might have some good dialogue, that we may understand each other, and that we might be civil in our discourse. We are thankful, Father, for the freedoms that we enjoy and for the opportunity that we have to, to express ourselves freely and to the betterment of our, of our city, our county, and our state, and our nation. We ask the, to be with us this evening, that we might, again, have a productive meeting, and this we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to welcome all of those of you who are here for a class. Hopefully, you learned something beneficial to report back to your, to your teachers. Just kind of a curiosity, how many of you are here for a class at BYU Idaho? All of you, pretty much. Okay. I didn't know if some of you are high school students or college students. Don't take that offensively or anything if you don't want to, don't think you look like a high school student anymore. All right, let's go ahead and move on with our roll call of our City Council members, please.
Councilmember Johnson, here. Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Eric Erickson. Council President Walker.
Here.
And we have Councilmember Erickson on the, Colin Erickson on line. So we have him here, and Councilmember Reeser has been asked to be excused. He is traveling with a high school, high school group in Europe. So we will excuse him tonight. All right, item number four on the agenda is we do need to amend the agenda as Pridge State Statute 74-204 for B. And this amendment is to include item 8C2, which is a bid approval for the Sunrise Drive Sewer Project. So I need a motion to be able to amend the agenda for that, if we could, please. Is there a motion to do so?
Mayor, I will make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Is there any questions or discussion about this? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We will go ahead and amend the agenda to be able to talk about that item then later on. Okay, item number five is to, well, see, we don't have any new employees to welcome, I don't believe. Is there any new employees here? I don't, we don't have anybody on the agenda to officially welcome, so. Okay, and we'll move on to item number six, which is our time for public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda. If there's anyone that would like to make a statement to us, please come to the podium up front here and state your name and address, and let us know what you're thinking about. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Thomas Hackinson. I live here in Rexburg at 430 South Third West, apartment 28, in the Brinsley Apartments. And I have attended this meeting before, and I'm going to bring up the subject again about that there's something that needs to be done as far as traffic control at the intersection of South Third West and West Forest South. I've noticed that there's a traffic light going in at Trejo and Yellowstone, and that's not too far from where I, from where my wife and I live. And we feel that there's just as much traffic at that intersection where we live as compared to Trejo and Yellowstone. So there needs to be some sort of traffic control, whether it be a traffic light, or a four-way stop, or whatever it takes. It, it's getting kind of dangerous here lately. That's basically what it boils down to.
Excuse me, was that West Fourth South?
West Fourth South, South Third West.
By the fourth ward church, or the third ward church, third and ninth ward?
Yeah. It's just a block down from the, from the roundabout.
Yeah, a block west of the roundabout, yeah.
Yes.
And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Keith, we're doing a, kind of a, isn't our intern doing a traffic count on that intersection as we speak? Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll be able to have more data to look at that and see what we need.
I mean, I don't know if it requires a traffic light, but just some sort of traffic control to help out, particularly not only with the tra, not, not only with the vehicle traffic, but the pedestrian traffic as well.
Yeah, in fact, the pedestrian traffic would probably be, you know, what we'd really want to look at there, how many pedestrians are crossing and things like that, so.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And there does seem to be a lot, I mean, okay, maybe it comes in spurts here and go, but I think I just overall, some sort of traffic control needs to be done there because, as I said, I feel like there's just as much traffic, if not more so, at the Trejo and Yellowstone intersection as opposed to the intersection of West Forest South and South Third West. Because most of the traffic comes from that direction.
Yeah, it would be similar. Okay, all right. Well, we will certainly look into that some more, and especially with this, as we receive the data from what we're doing right now in that study, and we'll be able to see what it looks like there.
Okay, thank you very much, folks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to make a comment? Anyone online besides Councilmember Erickson?
No, but here there's not.
Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and move on to item number seven, which is our public hearing. And this public hearing is a declaration to sell municipal real property located at approximately 245 Rodney Drive here in Rexburg. And I don't know if there's any, I mean, I think, Matt, did you have something that you wanted to present on this? Or should we do the public hearing first?
We, we could probably just pull it up real quick, honestly, if Deborah's pulling it up, and we can just show what we're looking at here. So you can see it on the GIS map there. And then there's also another document that shows the, the two parcels, how it would be split. Let's just show you that real quick as well.
Okay. And I mean, we, we talked about it quite a bit at length when we decided to change the zoning over there.
Yeah. So that, so basically, just, just to, what we would do is if you guys end up declaring it, of course, that we could sell it, then we have, we would just have a local Realtor list those two lots. And then you don't have to establish a minimum. I mean, you can if you want, but you don't have to. But we would, we would just get an idea of what they're worth, get them on the market, and then see what kind of offers we'd get.
Okay. All right. So in a public hearing, the, the procedure is that we, we will open the public hearing. We will ask for any comments for, in favor of this action, and then some, any comments in the, what we would call the neutral position, where you're just kind of neutral about it, and then any comments against this action. And then we'll close the public hearing, and based on, on those comments, we will discuss it and, and vote on the item. So, so at this time, we would declare this public hearing to be open. Is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to make any comments in favor of this action? And seeing none with that, is there anyone who would like to testify in the neutral position about this action? So if there is no one in the neutral position, is there anyone who would like to testify against this action? All right, if there's no one, we will declare the public hearing closed. And at this time, I would entertain, well, a discussion, but is there any discussion before we move forward with this item? If there is none, I would entertain a motion to go ahead and move forward with, with this, this item.
Mr. Mayor, I so move that we go ahead and do the declaration to sell municipal real property located at 245 Rodney Drive, Rexburg.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any further discussion or questions?
Mayor, just a quick question. The, the, what are called, right-of-way. The right-of-ways that are on that south parcel.
Mm-hmm.
Are we to anticipate, those are for what, is that sewer?
Yes.
What's its?
And the sewer line is already.
And south access?
Yeah, which would be, we would add a trail. And so the idea is to add a trail that connects that neighborhood to the trail behind the stadium there.
And the sewer line's already there. It's already, yeah.
So those, those right-of-ways would still remain?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and they'd be easements, right?
Easements, that's what, that's the word I was trying to come up with. Easements.
Yeah. Yeah, and then we would go ahead and put the trail in so that it's obvious that it's there, so that anybody that is interested in the lot is not surprised, you know, when you come in and put in a trail after they buy it, we'll already have it there, so it's obvious.
So the south lot, I'm assuming, because there's so much less space for someone to put a structure on it, would probably be, be sold at a lower value?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think the estimate that the Realtor gave us was 10,000, $15,000 lower on that lot than the other one.
Okay. That's my only question.
So, okay, yes.
I just want to say, in case anyone wonders, we've already discussed this, so that's why we don't have a whole lot to say about it.
Yeah.
It was a couple of times, and we've already discussed it, so.
Yeah, and then, by the way, we did clarify that the park there in the bottom right, that is in red, that we looked at the agreement there, and that park is required to be open to the public. So there's a, so there's that park right there as well, so.
But that is owned privately?
Trailer court, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. All in favor of this item?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, we will go ahead with that action then. Thank you. This time, we would then, we would move forward with item B, which is the Building Department Report with Mr. Brett Stoddard, our Building Department official, our building official. Did I miss one?
Just give me a minute.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I was thinking that, that was it. Sorry, sorry, Brett. Yeah, just sit right there for a minute. Let's, let's do item number A, which would be the tentative fiscal year 2025 budget and set the public hearing for July 17th of 2024 at 6:30 PM. We, as, as we mentioned before, we have, we went over the, the budget items for about an hour and a half before this meeting, and so all this, this item is just to set the public hearing to be able to let the public make comments about the budget on the 17th of July. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve this item.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the tentative fiscal year 2025 budget with the changes that will be made with the insurance, insurance that just found out about today, so those changes will be made. And set the public hearing for July 17th, 2024 at 6:30 PM.
All right, thank you very much. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. We'll move on now to item number B, the Building Department Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we've got a request from a few of you as council members to give some, or shed some light, if you will, on some of the projects and things that are happening in Rexburg. So as you can see, we have in our packet, we have a couple different reports. And these are just our valuation reports that we typically send out every month, and then there are some that are six months. And then we actually included another one that included all of 2023. The reason I figured we could include these to kind of just give an idea of, of if you have questions on projects, you could go to this, or you could even obviously call me and ask me, or however you want to go about that. But it could, it could shed some light on some projects that if you have a specific question of, of one project or another, or an address, or whatever.
So Brett, how do we get to that? How do we get to this?
So it's in your packet?
So normally, when Brett's not presenting, I'll just put that in the main packet, probably close to the, you know, here in the PC bits. So it'll just be on that general, that general packet.
So every, for every council meeting?
Yeah. Well, no, just the beginning, the first one of the.
Okay.
Yeah, because it'll be a monthly report typically, and then we do one in. We would normally do one about the end of June, but I just, I incorporated everything from January 1 until now just to show you kind of what's going on from January 1 until now, so.
So has that always been there? Just didn't know about it? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we typically put it out, and we actually put it out to the public, too, so I know it, it hits some other people outside of the city that have some.
You know, Sean usually emails that out as well, and I wondered if maybe you didn't get on her list.
Yeah, I'd love to get on her list, if I could.
Oh, okay. Okay, so if I could, not to bore you with any details.
Maybe just put all the council members on that list if you would.
I don't think any of us get that.
Not all of them, but I'll check to make sure that she's got the right.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I've never received it either.
Yeah, I haven't seen most report.
So Brian and Eric.
Do you get it?
Yeah. So not to bore you with any of the details on the valuations, you can, you can look through there, and, and I could certainly answer any questions, but just a couple of new businesses that we have in town that are coming or that are already here. I can only obviously disclose the ones that have actually pulled a permit as it becomes public record, and those are the ones that are obviously something that I can share publicly. We have Dutch Brothers on the west end of town. We have Hobby Lobby that's coming in. We have Chipotle that's.
Where's Hobby Lobby going?
Um, the old Cow Ranch building.
Okay.
Um, we have, and these are all permitted uses, or these are all permitted buildings, so these can be obviously public record. Starbucks just opened. We have several residential complexes, kind of on different ends of the town. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Where did you say Chipotle is going to be?
Uh, Chipotle is down on the south end of town.
McDonald's.
Like by the McDonald's down there, so. We have Sterling Medical, which is out by Walmart. And that'll be opening here shortly, pretty soon, actually. Pony Express, they're, they've begun their excavating. Good-to-go gas stations over by the high school. That one's, oh, probably in the three-quarter done phase. Real, getting closer, but not, not completed. And then we have, we meet with developers all the time with our ready team, and they, we have some that will say their name and some that won't. Obviously, none of those we can, we can disclose because it's nothing that's actually solidified. So that's really what I have for the report.
So it says Good-to-Go Rusty Taco. Is that the restaurant, or the?
It's inside. Yeah, it's inside the Good-to-Go out there.
Does that have anything to do with their water down there? That's why their tacos are rusty?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the name, but I'm going to go with what you said. I don't know. So that's, that's what I have, unless I have any, unless you have any questions, I'd stand for.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for Brett? All right, great. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Appreciate that report.
What was that?
Appreciate that report.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Okay, we will move on then to item number C, which is our Public Works Report. Mr. Keith Davidson.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So we've had a couple bids. The first one that we're seeking approval on is for the Slurry Seal bid. This is several streets throughout the town. A lot of it is just the new construction that we did last year, sealing up those roads. And so we had American Pavement was our low bid at $156,310. And so we're recommending award to them on this project.
Okay, is there any questions about that before we move forward? If none, I would entertain a motion to approve this bid.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Slurry Seal project and to American Pavement Preservation.
Okay, thank you. Is there any second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Council President Walker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will approve that bid, and item number two is for the Sunrise Sewer Project.
Yeah, so this second one is to take the sewer line from Sunrise down to about Fifth West and tie into the existing sewer line there. What we're doing is we're moving some of our sewer capacity over to the South List Station instead of the Seventh South List Station. And so this project, we had two bidders on that. We had Knife River and Edstrom Construction. Edstrom Construction was our low bid at $372,263. And so we're recommending award to Edstrom Construction on that.
Where exactly, where, where are these, where's this at?
So it's going to come down through where Sunrise Drive would come down through. So we're just running that sewer line. Where we got, so up on the hill.
Up there by the.
Crest Haven Church.
Crest Haven.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So one of the things you'll need to be ready for is as soon as the equipment starts showing up, there, there's going to be a lot of rumors flying that the road's going in, so. We just want to be prepared for that.
And I've told them that we're putting in the sewer line, so it's, it shouldn't come as a.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just, so is it just to take strain off of the one on Seventh South, or?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, all right. And if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion to, to approve this bid as well.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we award the bid for the Sunrise Sewer Project to Edstrom Construction.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Erickson. Eric Erickson, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Okay, thank you very much. Is there any questions for Keith before we let him go? Yes.
I do have one. So I did have a resident contact me about how the, on Pioneer, the crosswalk was not painted after the construction. You know, that crosswalk across.
From the Maverick across?
No, from the townhouses across to Park Street.
Oh, okay, that one in the.
Yeah, so they'll be coming through and doing the painting, so we've got.
And when will that be?
I know they're getting, they were waiting for the warmer weather, which obviously is, is here, and then they were going to start. I know this weekend they're looking at bringing in the, the paint truck to do all the striping, but then they, they come in at night when traffic is lower to do the sidewalk, the crosswalks on that, so.
But it'll be pretty soon?
Yeah, yeah, I would imagine.
I just worry children now have an understanding they can cross there, and so without the striping, I feel like it might be a little dangerous.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that should be coming soon.
Okay, yeah, good question. Thank you. Any further items? Okay, thank you. All right, item nine, Mayor's Business. The first order of business would be, we have a, I've asked J.C. Weber to accept an appointment on the Urban Renewal Board, and he has accepted that appointment, so we need to ratify him as a member of that. I would entertain a motion to do so unless there's any questions or comments before we do. And if not, I would entertain a motion to go ahead with that item.
Can, can we hear a little about, I guess maybe all of you know? I don't, I don't know him. Can we know just a little bit of?
Uh, yeah, he's John and Heather Weber's son. He's the owner of Circle of Love. One of the reasons we felt like that would be a good appointment was because he's in a business in the downtown and which will be, you know, affected or impacted, or maybe both, by our downtown development work and things like that. So we felt like it'd be good to have someone that can give feedback on, on that kind of thing. And so, I don't know, is there any other questions?
And I don't, I don't suppose there was any motivation, his father being the House Representatives, that maybe he could have some influence there?
Some of the urban renewal.
Debate comes up.
That, that will help, I think. That'll help us out, yeah. As they debate the urban renewal, trying to get rid of urban renewal as it comes up every year in the legislature, hopefully you'll be able to have a little influence for us that way, which is, never hurts, so. That wasn't necessarily one of the considerations, but, but it probably doesn't hurt. So, yeah, if there are no other questions about that, I would entertain a motion to move forward with, with that appointment, or with, to ratify that appointment.
Mr. Mayor, I so move that we ratify J.C. Weber as a member of the Urban Renewal Board.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Do you need a second?
Oh, yeah, I do need a second. Thank you, thank you. Second by Councilmember Chambers. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Let's move on to item number, item number C. Actually, item number, oh, B, sorry. Item number B is to ratify. We have some folks here with us tonight that are, that we've appointed or asked to be, to accept an appointment to the American Disabilities Act Advisory Board. And those who are here, maybe if you could raise your hand as I, as I read your name. We have Elizabeth Harrington. Elizabeth Harrington?
Right there.
Okay, and Daniel Harrington, I'm not, I don't know if he's here. Probably not, okay. Natalie Clark, yes, okay. And Alexandria Wyrick, Wyrick? Clark, yes, okay, and Alexandria Wyrick, Wyrick, she's not here either, okay, and and Nevia, I hope I'm not butchering these names too bad, Nevia Bright, is she here?
She's a blessing, unable to begin.
Okay, and Laura Rosson, that's you, okay, great, thank you. I would like to thank these these folks for being willing to be on this committee and help us out there on this advisory board, and at this point in time, unless there are any questions or comments, I would, I would entertain a motion to move forward with this ratification as well. Is there such a motion?
I'll make a motion that we ratify the names presented for our ADA Advisory Board.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second then.
Second by Councilmember Eric Erickson, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is unanimous, so we thank you for being on our our advisory board, and look forward to working with you on that and helping us out on on those matters. Okay, item C, which is not on the agenda, but it's a prerogative for Mayor's Business to do a little other business in in that category, but, so I'll say it's item C, which is, we have also here with us tonight, Mr. Mike Glasscock, who has has served on our Urban Renewal Board, and we appreciate his service in taking the place of one of our members who retired, and Mike, if you had come up, please, we'd like to present you with this plaque, and I will read this, it says, the Rexburg Urban Renewal Agency congratulates Mike Glasscock in appreciation for your service to the Rexburg Urban Renewal Agency as a member of the Board of Commissioners from 2022 to 2024. So we'd like to thank you for your service, and let's give him a big hand. I'll present that to you with the protective case so that you don't scratch it on your way home.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike, we appreciate you. Okay, and item number D on that agenda, which is also not on there, but it's just a very quick thing about, we, we were awarded again, for the 16th year in a row, a Tree City USA designation, and we have a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation designating that, and we also have a letter here from Council, U.S. Senator Mike Crepo congratulating us on receiving the Tree City USA Award. He says, achievements like this should be recognized and honored, this accomplishment is certainly a reflection of your commitment to establishing a healthy urban forest. You are to be commended for your tireless efforts and dedication on behalf of forestry in Idaho, I look forward to following your future success. Again, congratulations, and I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Sincerely, Mike Crepo, U.S. Senator. So that was nice of him to to notice that and send us a congratulatory note. So that's all of the Mayor's Business items I have, unless anyone has any questions about anything in particular for me. I will say, oh, just, I brought this just to remind me of, we met this morning with the new executive director of the the Idaho Technology Council, and had a really good discussion with them about helping to further our workforce development and entrepreneurship and technology work, you know, education, career technical education and things like that in this area, and she informed me that last year, I guess they're a granting agency, or they are a kind of an agent that helps municipalities get grants, and she said there was only one grant from Idaho in some of the, in this area that she works in, and she was like, we've got to do better than that, because this money is going out to other places, and we need to get our share of it, so we're going to be working with her. I had her come in and introduced her to Mary, our grant writer, so that, you know, she can take advantage of her knowledge and expertise in in grant writing and finding grants and stuff, so, so we're looking forward to that relationship and making that beneficial to us in in some, a lot of the ways that we need different infrastructure projects and things like that. Okay, let's move on to item number 10, which is our calendared bills, we have one second reading, which is ordinance number 1315, that is a rezon at approximately 15 and 19 Sawtell Avenue from mixed use to Community Business Center. We've talked about this previously, is there any questions about this before we move forward with this item, this second reading? Are you going to bring that up, Debridge, just just to kind of remind us of where this is, so that we know what we're talking about here, I think we remember from the previous meeting, but we'll bring this up. Right there, let's see. Alan, this is, uh, let's see, Sawtell, I'm trying to remember actually where Sawtell, is that up in?
That's where it's west, Mitch, now ours.
Oh, that's right, okay, yeah, right there.
Next to Dr. Fulmer's office.
Yeah, right there, next to Dr. Fulmer's office, right, okay, okay, thank you. If there's no questions or comments about this, I would entertain a motion to consider ordinance 11 or 13 or 15, second read.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider ordinance number 1315, second read.
All right, thank you, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, oh, yes.
Just a quick question, this whole area out there was originally designated as mixed use, and we're changing a lot of those parcels to Community Business Center, does that say anything to us about why, why we have mixed, a mixed use zone?
Um, yes.
Anyway.
Yeah, he, he wanted it to be mixed use, he's got kind of a vision of what he wants it to be, speaking of Mr. Nybar, the owner of those properties, and some of the folks that are buying the properties from him, just, they, they don't feel like they can make mixed use work, or they really don't want mixed use, and.
Are there, are there, are there significant differences between mixed use and CBC?
Ten percent.
Yeah, the the mixed use requires 10%.
Does it?
Of residential or commercial, one or the other.
Is Alan, it does require 10%?
At least, yeah.
10% or 1,000 square feet.
Yeah, and so, and then these ones especially where they're right on the the highway, they not particularly wanted to have apartments and things up above them, and so, we had, we had a conference call with Mr. Nybar the other day, and and we talked about this, and he's still hoping on the lots back behind, he can, he can get some mixed use projects going in there, but we had a pretty good conversation about how he, what he needs to be able to make that happen, and there's, there's some definitely, some issues with parking and things like that in mixed use, so.
There's no restriction in CBC to allow for some residential if you wanted to?
Uh, there is, you can't have any residential in CBC.
None at all?
Yeah.
So there is a significant difference between mixed use and CBC? Okay.
Yep.
Okay, just, just curious.
Yeah, and these folks that have bought these lots definitely are, they, they, they're not really interested in the mixed use concept, as far as one, what they want to do here. And one thing that we do need to know is with mixed use, there's, there's, there's a higher parking requirement because of the apartments above, and so if there's not room for parking, you know, it just won't work. So you really almost, in order to make mixed use work there, you've almost got to have someone like the Hemmings, or that's willing to come in and build it like a, you know, consolidate a bunch of lots and build a parking structure and some, or something like that to really make it work. Or maybe if you're creative and you can make it work, you know, there's ways that you can do it, but anyway, that's, that's why these folks want to change it to CBC.
Yeah, and I mean, the other, the other properties that we've also looked at recently have all changed from mixed use to CBC, so you just got to wonder whether that's, that mixed use is.
Well, we had it as CBC, and he wanted, he wanted to change it, so we did, and and that might be the question, is should we have done that, but, yeah.
And I just think that it's the area, it just doesn't fit with the mixed use, but I think mixed use is very useful in other places.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, well, that's probably a whole nother conversation for another day, but, anyway, so what is before us is the, is the change, or is the second reading of this item, and so if there's, if there's any other discussion, go ahead, if there's not, I would entertain a motion to consider this second read.
I already had the motion, I made that motion.
Oh, you made the motion, sorry, that's right, we had the second, and the second, who seconded it?
Mariana.
Mariana did.
Did I? I don't remember.
Did you get that, Mariana? Okay, I just want to make sure Mariana had that, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you for reminding me where I was.
Sure.
Okay, let's move on to item number, let's see, we don't have any third readings, so we have the consent calendar, which is the minutes from the May 15th, 2024 meeting, and the approval of our 2024 fireworks stand permits, and the approval of paying the city of Rexburg bills. Is there any questions about that? Anyone want to know where to get the best fireworks? If not, I would, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent calendar and the other items as stated.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Council President Walker seconds, any questions or comments about that item, this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go ahead and move forward with those items, get the bills paid, and.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing, oh, business, who's all going, who's all going to be here for the parade?
Oh, yeah, that's a good item, we need to know.
You mean for the parade?
Can I just get to you a couple days?
Okay, yeah.
Is that the sixth?
On the fourth.
I think I'll be here.
On the fourth of July.
Sure, I'll be here.
And you might have to check, I don't know, O'Callaghan, I think's gone, so.
I'll check with Callahan.
Check with him and, you know, Reese, you'll be here, okay.
The question is why, Mike.
You're going to the parade, I get your golf cart to drive.
It's been a while since the city council's been in the parade, I don't remember.
Through to last year.
Where are we at?
Really?
Boy, I guess we're not very memorable.
Where was I?
Apparently, you haven't been out there trying to get beads from us like.
Well, we were in the new parade since last year, fourth of July.
Sorry, sorry, it's not the great way to get out of it.
Okay, so I'll get everybody a golf cart, then we'll give more information, I'll know in the next meeting.
And I don't need a cart like usual, so, okay. Okay, well, thank you, everyone who is here, we appreciate your attendance here, and we will see, we'll, we'll be adjourned, see you next time. All right, am I still able to make my grandkids to ballgame?
Oh, yeah, who can't.
These are so fun to watch.
Yeah, I got two on the same team, so it'll be double fun.